Okay, you ready? Let's start. Welcome to the Lancaster Council Meeting. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Johnson.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation will be with Father Leo DeShawn.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty God, your holy people here in Lancaster gather for this local expression of our democratic process and of our rule of law. We gather with our leaders whom we have chosen to guide us and to speak for us and to serve us. We ask that your Holy Spirit guide them that their decisions be always based on the common good. We ask all of this through your Son, Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you. Can you under the pledge of allegiance?
Ladies and gentlemen, would face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we've got some presentations. Oh. Hi. Sandra Johnson is going to do the presentations this evening, and I'll hand them to them, right? This is something different.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that very much. You know, today we have the honor of acknowledging two young men. These two men that we're going to be acknowledging showed integrity. And when we show integrity, sometimes it's a challenge, but even more so when no one's watching. And that's when they chose to be an honorable citizen of our community. These two young men chose to have a future in a career that you have to have integrity, and that's something that you can't train in, but that's something that's in your heart. These two young men want to be our future firefighters, coming from a family of firefighters in law enforcement. These are our heroes. And when they come to our home and we give them our loved ones, our child, we trust them. We hope that they're there to save our child and not steal anything from us. And these two young men showed that. They found $1,400. No one was watching. They picked it up, went right away to the front building, and gave it back. When they called the individual of who it came from, because one of them was a check and there was a phone number, the lady came back in tears. That was her daughter's rent money. And thanks to these two young men, currently our heroes, we, as the City of Lancaster, our mayor and a city council, would like to acknowledge them. So please, Christopher and Lawrence, if you can please come up and let's give them a big round of applause.
Sure.
It is Lawrence Buena Ventura and Christopher Cuado, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Again, big round of applause for these two fine young men. Again, they are receiving their education in fire science, too.
We got new people at the DIA's. We have Jim Voss from the Planning Commission, and we got David Viera from the Criminal Justice Commission. Our thinking is, is that those two commissions have the greatest impact on the city, and so we'd like them here and keeping us surprised and keeping us on the straight and narrow and keeping us in a uniform direction. So it's an experiment, we'll see how it works. I think it's going to work out very well. Thank you, thank you for coming. Okay, City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
This accessory agency action is new business item one. City Clerk, do we have any communications?
No communications.
No speaker cards.
Want to waive the, we'll waive the presentation? Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution Number SA 01-15.
I second.
Let's vote.
Probably still need humans.
Okay. There we go. It's unanimous. NB2, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
And is there a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution SA 02-15.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. NB3, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number SA 03-15.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, the minutes. Any speaker cards on the minutes?
No.
We're making progress. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
It's unanimous with the mayor abstaining because he wasn't here. Consent calendar.
I think we need to remove, is it three, four, and five?
Yes, we'd like to have items three, four, and five to be pulled for discussion.
Anything else?
We have speaker cards. Why are we removing CC3?
It was a request, as I asked him.
It's the one that we're going to, we're not going to reverse it.
No, we're going to do it, I'm just putting it up for discussion.
Well, we're removing it from the agenda.
No, I'm not removing it, I'm just putting it up for discussion.
And the speaker cards, so we not vote on the?
Okay, so we're going to leave CC3.
We're pulling them for discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So should we not vote on the consent calendar?
By our third term, we're going to figure this out.
I gotta say it.
Okay, anything else pulling for discussion?
I misspoke, you're right, it was Meyer. I move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I will second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Who's presenting item three?
On CC3, that would be Public Safety Director Durico and Assistant City Attorney Corbett.
Okay, good. So did we warn them they were going to have to do this?
It's a complete and utter shock to both of them.
Good evening, Mayor Paris.
It wouldn't be fun without the adrenaline, right?
That's right.
It's all, it's important stuff.
So as you'll recall from two weeks ago when the ordinance was introduced, ordinance number 1,001 provides that an administrative citation may be issued to a person who commits shoplifting, forgery, theft, receipt of stolen property, disturbing the peace, unlawful dumping, and vandalism. This is an administrative procedure and an administrative penalty that a deputy or other designated officer may use as an alternative to pursuing misdemeanor criminal proceedings through the DA's office and the courts. The ordinance provides that the administrative penalty for the first citation is $500 and $1,000 for the second and any subsequent citation. The ordinance clearly affords a person cited his or her due process rights. It provides an opportunity to appeal and have an administrative hearing before an independent hearing officer. The city bears the burden of proof to establish by a preponderance of the evidence that the appellant committed the offense that was the basis of the citation. And if an appealed citation is upheld by the hearing officer, the person cited has an opportunity for judicial review pursuant to the Government Code and the Code of Civil Procedure. We know that this is cutting edge. We don't know of any other city that's taking this step at this point, but we're willing to take, push the envelope a little bit in order to protect our citizens, our business owners, and our residents. Since we introduced ordinance 1,001, we've conferred with a number of the interested parties. County Council has reviewed the ordinance and seems to be comfortable with it. We've gotten positive feedback from the Sheriff's Department. Obviously, there are a number of procedural and logistical issues we're going to have to work out with the Sheriff's Department. We begun those conversations, and will make sure that implementation of the ordinance complements their existing practice and does not complicate it. The District's Attorney's Office has taken no position on the ordinance. The Public Safety Director has had meetings with several judges at the courthouse, and I believe we've gotten some positive outcome as a result of the ordinance already, and I'll let him address that. Thank you.
You know, part of the discussion, and as well as our judiciary is very aware of is out this Prop 47 relates to all the actions that have taken place over the last few years from our legislature.
Get closer to the mic.
I'm sorry, sir. Lowering incarceration rates to the point where several individuals now are the majority of people arrested, especially as it relates to misdemeanor in our community, are doing street time rather than incarceration time. And that's been for a myriad of reasons that we've talked about numerous times here. What has happened now, based on the fact that we've even opened this door, is we've had some, it's open discussions with our judiciary as how we see these issues and how they impact us, along with what has come from the working group that we're involved in and discussions on programs for diversion and all those things that exist. Now, you know, it's been stated in the past that the city's not involved in programs as it relates to releasing certain programs, and that is absolutely not true. We work with a number of nonprofits as well, as we were instrumental in getting the day reporting center for the AB 109 program here put after probation had not implemented it for 18 months. So we've, we work within that program. The issue here is, is what's the responsibility for us as a community, for as government to the community? And our response, number one responsibility is the safety of our community and to make the community whole as it relates to people and individuals that victimize the community. As things are decriminalized through this process, this at least imposes a process in place that there is some penance and some penalty for committing those crimes and victimizing our community in Lancaster. And I believe we're making that statement very clearly through the, through the implementation of this ordinance, should you approve it. Again, as Justin brought up, there is a lot of procedural issues to work through. We certainly want to, don't want to undermine some process where an individual who may be eligible for a much involved process through the judiciary system is not impacted, and this becomes a sidebar to that. We absolutely will step out of the way of that as it relates to someone's history and what the impact could be on that individual and what their responsibility is to make the community whole. At the same time, I believe the financial impact, in my experience over 30 years, is, you know, incarceration's one thing, the judicial process is another, but what seems to get people's attention most is getting in their pocketbook, okay, and making their ability to be able to enjoy the luxuries of life when they're dealing with penalty issues here. So I, from that standpoint, we'll be very responsible through the, through the judicial process, how it relates to the responsibilities of those agencies that we move through this process. And at the same time, we have another tool in our tool bill for combating criminal issues that are occurring in our community.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do, Lee. There's a lot of talk in the community about how we're going to retrieve this money from the individuals. Can you go into that and talk about the different ways that the City of Lancaster will be able to obtain the money?
Yes. We traditionally seek other ways to recover funds that are owed to the city. We already have that implemented as it relates to code enforcement, parking enforcement, other municipal, municipal issues on recovery. Our finance department's very good at, at collection as it relates to fines and forfeitures. Historically, what we've seen, and part of the discussion we had with the judiciary yesterday, is we've seen a continuing decrease in the city's apportionment of fines and things that are, and penalties that are collected through the court. Whereas on our own side, where the ability we have as a municipality to go after certain other items that the court doesn't normally do, such as state franchise tax board, as DMV registration fees, other things that we have implemented through our process. I mean, there's actually a ability to attach certain subsidies that exist out there through a process based on civil judgment that could be processed through this. So those are not typically the court, what the court does. Court typically goes to collection or attaches someone's driver's license, okay, and those are also things that could be considered as this. So through our process, we have a much better rate of recovery as it relates to that. And so that's something different than what is typically done through the judiciary process. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, speaker cards. Kurt Boyer.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, I had no intention of speaking on this issue when I walked in until I picked up this paperwork. You know me from working with the homeless, the addicted, the mentally ill. These people live on the street. The idea of trying to collect fines from them is almost ludicrous. They have no money. They barely have food. The idea that they're going to stop committing crimes simply because they get something slapped on them that might result in two days, three days in jail, and a release, they have no issue with that. Matter of fact, it's, like I said before, two hops and a cop. I see no way that you're going to collect money from these individuals. What I do see is money should be spent to help these individuals. We just did a census on the homeless, and yes, we undercounted, it's the way it works, but it was a very vigorous effort. And again, my experience with the people that are out on the street, you can charge them $500, they'll just look at you and laugh. And it'll send them to court, and it'll send them into jail, and frankly, the rules say, and the numbers come out, as it's more expensive to house someone in jail than it is to offer them services, to keep them from repeating this behavior. I've worked with ACTN, I've worked with Tarzana Treatment Center, I work with Mental Health America, I work with Grace Resources, I work with the, matter of fact, we're going to be displaying at the library shortly. We're trying to find a way to help these people to move away from these activities rather than punish them. Because as I said, you can attach a fine, a penalty, to someone who can barely afford a pack of smokes. It's going nowhere. You will not collect the money. And you're still going to have to go through the political ramifications, the paperwork, blah, 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 which is going to cost Lancaster money. We can do this smarter. We can definitely do this smarter. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer, did you read the ordinance?
Yes.
Did you read it?
Yes. Yes, of course I did. That's why I said I was surprised when I walked in. I was coming in to talk about energy conservation, but when I got this one.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Reeves?
Mayor Paris, Council staff, ladies and gentlemen, I'm opposing this ordinance for different reasons. First of all, on the positive side, City of Lancaster has always stood up for the health and welfare of the people of the community, even when I don't agree with you. Yesterday, I saw the airplane in the sky. I opposed it, but it's here, it's doing its job. Last time I spoke about sidewalk that the City of Lancaster put up on J8 for the students of Sunnydale School would not have to walk in the street. This is another attempt by the city to look after the health and welfare of the citizens, even though I don't agree with it. And the reason that I don't agree with it is because it seems like some of these things are already covered under our city code. I know people in my neighborhood that have had loud parties and have been cited by the city, and they've had to find, pay a fine. And this is covered under the disturbing the peace, we already have that. I'm sure that some of these things that, that we want to cite these people, and they deserve it. And even if they can't pay the money, it'll be on their record, and it'll catch up with them eventually, somehow. But my focus is that I want us to focus on the Lancaster codes. For example, I can look out my window right now, and I can see a guy across the street that has lumber piled on the side of his house, and his yard looks terrible. Now, in the old days, code enforcement would be out and take care of something like that. My concern is that we're going to get involved in all of this stuff, and we're not even going to have any code enforcement at all for the basic things that the city has taken care of in, in the past. Another concern to mine is that, you know, he mentioned these people on the street, they don't have money and all that stuff. Sure, some of them aren't nice people, they're armed, and we're going to have civilian security guards go up to these guys and try to cite them, and it could be nasty. The sheriff should be the one to cite these people. If you go ahead with the law, let the sheriff cite these people. Don't have our Lancaster security people do it because they might get hurt. So those are my comments, and I hope you consider them. Finally, you know, we could, we could wait six months on this thing, or three months, and see how it's going to apply. If it's a complete disaster, and people aren't getting cited, then we could proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. And Michael, I'm going to move that lumber as soon as I have time. David Paul.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. I had a couple questions about the new ordinance, and I had them answered before the session. So what's left is just to say thank you for being innovative and trying to find a way to do things. I like it when we blaze the trails. Later on in the public, non-agendized comments, I'm going to get up and tell a tale of two cities, about our sister city of the Salt and how they manage things. But it's always good for me to come here and see, and knowing all of you as well as I do, Mr. Durico, all of you, we're in good hands, and I appreciate you being willing to give this thing a whirl. We have to do something. It's always better to do something than do nothing. So thank you very much. It'll unfold, we'll see how it goes, because I don't think anybody knows how it'll play out, but we're doing something, and that's what's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Zink.
I just think you guys need more information regarding this, as far as getting statistics before you make an ordinance like this. I mean, you don't know, I haven't seen any statistics regarding what kind of people are robbing these stores, you know, their age, their ethical background, their, why they're doing it. I mean, it seems like we should have a lot more information regarding something before we make a law about it. I mean, it sounds, I understand what you're doing, you're trying to send a message out there that we don't like thieves, and I hate thieves, I really do. But I think we're probably hurting the community more by doing this, by having, it should go through the court system. I do think it's not due process. I do believe it's probably unconstitutional, because I don't think these people would be represented. And a lot of the thievery is inside job, you know, in Walmart and Home Depot and stuff like that, a lot more than what people are stealing. Also, Prop 47, I won't apologize for voting in favor of Prop 47. I think it was the most, best law passed by the citizens of California since Nixon declared war on drugs. Really, I do. It's going to save the state so much money, it's going to free the courtrooms, it's going to do so much good. These people, what the Antle Valley Courthouse is, was doing, especially to the young people with giving them felony and strikes, is outrageous. The Department of Justice, they did a report on Antle Valley Courthouse. These kids go there, and the District Attorney says, we'll give you four years in jail if you go to court, but, or you do six months in jail and you do a felony and a strike. These kids don't even know what felony or strike is. They've never been taught that in high school, and they're ruining their lives from getting jobs. Also, the courthouse puts almost a $6,000 fine on them for going through the probation department. Did you guys know that? Did you? Okay, so this is another money on top of this? On top of the $6,000?
It's actually, wait a minute, wait a minute, it's actually in lieu of it. You know, it's not, it's not that they get both. It gives us some flexibility.
Right, but Prop 47, these people should have never gotten felonies or strikes. They're given felonies and strikes, they should have never gotten a felony or a strike on these. You can still give them jail time, you can still have them pay a fine, they can still do community service, they can still do all this. I think it'd be better maybe if you pay, had them pay to put their picture in the paper, might be better, so they're known through the community than doing this. I mean, when do you do a parking ticket? You know where you send your money? You send it to an out-of-county city. The City of Lancaster doesn't even collect their own money. That's a job.
Jason, thank you. Shannon McDonald.
I'm actually speaking on, on behalf of the same thing. I believe what, what I'm starting to hear more and more, it seems as though we all need refresher courses. I've been looking up the last two weeks since the last criminal, the last council, the last council meeting, I looked, I was, I've been doing, I'm researching this issue. This AB 109, we have to do something. If we need to, if we have to live with people who are, had felonies that are dropped to misdemeanors, we have to find a way to live with these people, whether it's through the probation department. Oh, I have a criminal justice meeting to go to tomorrow, so I have to save some for them, sorry. But the probation department really has to kick in when it comes to this. I've actually, I know that what it takes to be a probation officer, especially in the field, that you are the one that's calling and making these different things, trying to keep them off the street. It's better trying to keep them off, out of jail. But we can only do so much. I mean, there's codes, and even, I even looked up this and found kids in the law, that, up to 18, they have no idea what they're supposed to do. We want our people to act a certain way, but some people just don't have common sense. I'm sorry, they just don't. Not to disrespect anyone, but some people just don't have common sense, and sometimes you have to, this is stuff that's online. I found this in our Lancaster, our Lancaster things, there's lots of stuff here that's reasonable, the laws are pretty reasonable. Don't litter, don't litter, it's simple, there's a fine. I have friends, I went off on it because they littered. I told them I needed to stop the car and pick the litter up. It infuriates me to see that. But when, as soon as the sheriff pulls them over, they're ready to cuss them out. It's the law. Minors, after 18, when you're 18 years old, if it's after 10 o'clock, you're supposed to be in the house. Simple. We see them outside, then, then they're, they're committing, they're in sense. And everything that Sandra Johnson, Councilwoman Sandra Johnson is doing with her little events that she puts on in her, at her college and things, it's wonderful. It brings the community together. I think people need to be, we need to be shaking more hands and figuring out, and also, this is the biggest thing for me. We're only responsible for Lancaster, right? I'm just wondering. We're not responsible for what Palmdale does, right? Because to me, I was looking at it in such a bigger picture, but when I narrowed it down to Lancaster, it seemed a little simpler to deal with. I mean, look who we have as representatives here. I mean, there's, I'm trying to be part of the solution as well. I'm not here just to complain about everything that's wrong. I'm here to commend you for the things that are right, and also be a part of the policy implementation or policy, the solution. I don't want to just be here complaining, I'm sorry. As a matter of fact, the book that I'm reading right now is Ethical Dilemmas and Decisions in Criminal Justice. I've just been all over this for two weeks. I literally have been putting all, I'm like in school mode right now. So I just wanted to tell you guys that. That's all I have to say. The fines, to me, seem fine. I mean, there's other things we have to do to figure out what we're going to do to fix the issues that we have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ed Galindo?
Your Honor, members of the commission, councilors, Proposition 47 is one of the best pieces of legislation that we've gotten across. It's good. I don't understand why there is such opposition to it. We're going to make money in the long run. We're going to keep our people out of jail. We're going to keep our youth without a felony conviction on it. What you guys have done in the ordinance, ordinance 101, I think it was really great. I think this is going to bring the families into the situation. You get, if you're going to find them, if you're going to find the family, the family's going to find out what the children are doing. Children will, kids, young people, will do foolish things until they grow up. Right now, we've gotten it down to where it's no longer a felony, and a now misdemeanor, they don't have to carry that felony for the rest of their lives. There were two things in the ordinance that I disagree with. As an alternative to misdemeanor criminals proceedings, any officer defined in this chapter may issue an administrative citation. You put the word "may" in there, it should have been "shall." Another portion, when the officer determined through personal observation that the crime has been committed, then again, you're giving him the opportunity of not doing it, of not citing him. Okay, if the officer himself, and I see a lot of leeway in this, they're letting the officer give a little leeway whether he's going to cite this guy or not. If the officer sees him citing it, him actually committing the crime, he should cite it. There's no problem, there should be no, no if, ands, or buts there. And the "may" should got, it should be "shall" as to notice. We have another portion here where the alternative, the officer, the commander, I guess, is the one that's going to, if the officer gives it over to the commander, then the commander writes it out. Then the commander has the alternative also to make the decision whether he's going to file it or whether he's not. And here, you've given the officer, the captain, or whoever the officer is, that time, which is fine, give him that time, but give him some specific time. We said here, you had, may then issue the, may then issue the citation. May then issue the citation means he can do it anytime he wants. There is no time element there. So other than that, I think you guys have done a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Any discussion? No, but the public hearing's closed. It's now with the council?
I think what we're doing here is a good thing. If you look at the statistics that happen between the two cities, the deputies do a great job. The City of Lancaster arrests over 16,000 people a year. The City of Palmdale arrests over 16,000 people a year. We have a courthouse that can only do 835 trials a year. Those people that are in jail today, under the current laws, are there for a reason, because they've been plea bargained down. They've been plea bargained down, so in my opinion, those people have plea bargained down because there's, out of necessity. So we're arresting 32,000 people, we're only trying 800 people. They're out there doing what they can. And so our deputies are doing what they can, but we need to open up the courts. This helps us open up the courts. This helps us with taking the backlog from the courts. This helps us do and protect our homeowners, our citizens, our business owners. This ordinance helps the entire community. I can't say enough about this ordinance and what it does for the City of Lancaster.
Yeah, I, if I could add on to that, I agree with you, Vice Mayor. A young lady that came up, Shannon McDonald, I think it was, she made a great statement. She said that we together need to make a difference as a family, as a community, and this is a way of us doing this. We, as a council, will make sure that whatever it takes, we're going to make this community safe. We're not saying that we don't respect the law, because we do. That's what we're about here. What we're saying is that we are taking responsibility for our actions. No matter what financial status you may be, if you commit a crime, you will pay for it. And that's what we are going to be doing here in our community. We need to, and we will, set the tone that you are responsible for what you choose to do. We just acknowledged two young men, they chose, when no one was watching, to do something that was honorable, and they were acknowledged for it. And we will do the same on the other end. If you choose to do something, we will fine you for it, because we will be and continue to be a safe community.
Anyone else? Okay. I may have rolled this out a little quickly, and I think that we need a lot more public discussion about it, but not because of the ordinance so much, but as recognizing that, you know, our criminal justice system, we don't have one. We really don't. It's an illusion. It's totally dysfunctional. It's totally, it's not working. And it's not working really bad now because of this new proposition. Not that I, I really don't have a position on the proposition. I mean, it's the law. Whatever the law is, that's what we'll work in. But it does put us in a state of crisis, in that you now have an already overburdened system just inundated with cases. All of these people that are in prison that are, that should be let go according to the law, they need court hearings to do that, the, it's just in a state of absolute chaos over there. That could be a bad thing, or it could be a good thing. It could be a good thing in us recognizing that we have to reinvent how we make our community safe. And I really think we're at that position now. And I think it's going to be resolved on a local level, on a city level. I don't think it's going to be resolved on a national or state level. And, you know, I would like to extend the invitation to everybody who would like to get involved in reinventing a criminal justice system that works, you know, that will work with the Sheriff's Department, that'll work with the courts. And I think this is just a first step in that direction. I'm going to put it back on the calendar in 30 days to see if we need to adjust it. I want more community input, and there's no reason we can't do that in 30 days if it needs to be adjusted. But more importantly, it's a wake-up call to people that we have got to reinvent how we handle criminal justice. And, you know, I'm really not all that excited about, I mean, we have put so much energy into trying to help people who find themselves in difficult circumstances, that we have become a magnet for those people. There's a lot of groups working with these people. They don't need another group. What we need to do is come together and figure out a way to make this city thrive in ways that no other city has experienced. And if we just put half the energy that we're putting in to the, all of the different public services that we provide into actually creating something wonderful, I think we'd all be surprised. And, you know, as, I hate to disappoint everyone that's involved in the public services sector, but that is not going to be my focus this next year. The focus is going to be on creating a city that has never existed before, because if we don't do it, we're going to find us living in a place nobody wants to live in. You know, it's kind of a good place, in a way, because we're going to have to get off our butts and do something we've never thought about doing before. So those of you who are creative, and those of you who want to get engaged, we have a place for you. Those of you who want to complain, you know, don't be surprised, I'm not going to listen. What I want is new and fresh ideas, because I absolutely know we cannot turn back. We could not do it the way we've been doing it before. And, you know, I'm the first to think that it's, I think that we put way too many people in prison who didn't necessarily need to be there. The, and we put, and we didn't put enough people in there that should have been there, because the beds were full. And I think this gives us a way to realign. You know, in my opinion, if you hurt somebody, somebody needs to hurt you. It's a pretty simple form of criminal justice. If it's, if it's, if it's a victimless crime or a nonviolent crime, then I think there's a lot of different methods we can use to raise people up. For what it's worth, that's what we're going to do.
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 1001.
I second.
And I did hear you say that you're going to send that to our Criminal Justice Commission for more review?
I don't think you actually heard it, but that's what I meant. But I also want it sent out to the community, and I would like the community, the different community groups that have an interest, to actually get engaged with the Criminal Justice Commission, and let's, let's, you know, fine-tune it, and then let's think of the next thing we're going to do. But there's no reason why this shouldn't be the safest city in California, and that's the direction we're going. Thank you. What is CC4?
CC4 is this cleanup ordinance for the municipal code. I'm not sure why we pulled it, but I'd be happy to give the staff report again.
No, there's no speaker cards. Let's just, is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt CC4.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. And five was also pulled. Would...
Do I have speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay, let's, is there a motion?
Move to adopt CC5.
Second.
Let's vote. Okay, we're going to break for five minutes. Ah, probably 10. Okay, everybody back? I got to do that so the camera knows to turn on, just so everybody knows. Don't we all have to recuse ourselves on this one?
I, yes. I need to recuse. On CPH1, we have two council members and the mayor who have conflicts. It would be appropriate to begin by announcing each of your conflicts, and then, because there are three council members who are conflicted, we would not have a quorum without imposing the rule of necessity. We will then draw straws among the three conflicted individuals, and the short straw will remain and vote, and the other two will leave the room. So if you can each announce your conflicts, and then we can go ahead and do drawing straws for the rule of necessity.
Oh, it's the straw game.
I like your choice of words, "were conflicted"? "Were conflicted."
You're conflicted, yes.
Okay, got it. So in regards to the transit-oriented development zones, I have property in the downtown area. Actually, have a couple of houses and a vacant piece of property. Cedar, and then houses on beach.
And myself, I have property that I own on Sierra Highway, which is 44055 Sierra Highway, and also leased property on 808 West Avenue J.
And I have a conflict, because the city attorney said I had a conflict.
I believe you have an office building, Mr. Mayor.
No, she said you were conflicted.
I am usually conflicted. I have a couple of office buildings. Do I have to give the address of both of them, or just one?
If you can give the general location.
Okay, 10th and J, and then on 10th Street is 43364, 10th Street West.
Okay. So Madam City Clerk will come up with the straws. She has three straws, two long, one short. The three of you will each draw a straw, and whoever gets the short straw will remain and vote, the other two will leave the room.
It's like the person who has to jump out of the lifeboat, you know? It was either this or spin the bottle. Pick this.
I didn't think spinning the bottle was entirely appropriate.
I would agree.
Well, I got the last one. How do you tell which one's longer?
Rex's.
The mayor's drawn the short one.
All right.
Again.
Again.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes.
Okay, so who's doing the staff report?
Brian Ludke.
And just a reminder, this is a continued public hearing, and the public hearing is already open.
I'm going to eat dinner while you, go ahead.
That's fine with me. Mr. Mayor, and remaining members of the council, this is a project which is now at the culmination of a pretty extensive 18-month effort. It affects the area that is basically to the northeast, southeast, and southwest of the city's MetroLink station, approximately a mile in diameter. And what it really seeks to do is set in place development requirements and regulations that are appropriate for the mixed-use nature of this area. When the city adopted its general plan and zoning, it established in much of it a mixed-use designation that it was essentially used as kind of a holding zone. What we will do under this particular set of regulations is establish what the proper zoning requirements ought to be for the area, recognizing both what is already there and the hope for incremental, long-term investment in the future. The existing zoning is really laid out on this, and that's, that's kind of what I want to talk about. The existing zoning allows a number of things to occur in this area that are probably not in the best interest of what's going on there. The effort here really grew out of an initial effort known as the Southeast Transit Village Planning Project. And what we found out in that, for example, was that we have a number of very viable, very longtime local businesses that are in the area to the southeast of the Transit Village or the MetroLink Station that felt they were not adequately protected, nor did they feel that it allowed them, for instance, adequate expansion. At the same time, we've had discussions with people who are in the neighborhood south of downtown. They would like the ability, in many cases, to make some incremental improvements in that area, but felt that the zoning didn't really allow them to do that. What we're proposing is zoning that reflects what we think is appropriate in that long-term area, and it's based upon a really good community outreach effort, in which we talked to people not only that we met through the Southeast Transit Village planning effort, but also knew people that gave their input, came to meetings, volunteered their Saturdays in many cases. many cases, and told us what they really were looking long-term for in that area. The code that is proposed mirrors the form-based code that is used currently in downtown. Downtown's form-based code, as this one will do, relies a lot more on looking at the form and shape of buildings, and the kind of space areas that it creates, rather than concentrating solely on use. That's been a very successful effort downtown. We feel that this is once again appropriate for this very traditional type of neighborhood and pattern that we have here. Focuses on those building types, focuses also on the street, recognizes that streets are really a part of the urban design fabric in these kinds of places. The design and feel of the street has a lot to do with how the area around it operates. We saw that in our downtown, with the change of the street, the change of the character. We want to make sure that we continue to do that as we look long-term for this, for this area of our city. And you can see the various types of streets. I mentioned earlier the work that we had done with a number of business owners southeast of the MetroLink Station. And one of the things that we made sure that we put into this plan was the ability for them to retain that employment, those longtime businesses that are down there, but also give them the opportunity to expand incrementally. When things are good, to allow them to do things that improve their business, allow them to hire new people, allow them to continue to be a very vital part of the employment base in our community. But at the same time, if they reach the point where they want to move, that they can have a piece of property that's very valuable for them to, to turn over to somebody else, sell, or use in some other way. The other thing that I'd really like to focus on, and this came out of our discussions, particularly with property owners in the south downtown area, we have, in those areas, people who are looking to make incremental improvements, maybe adding a unit, maybe adding a couple of units, maybe combining a couple of lots side by side into something that's now three units instead of the two that are there. We want to encourage that. We want to make sure that investment can continue to happen in that area, but it has to happen in a way that's consistent with the fabric and the character of the area. This form-based code allows that to happen. As one example, in what we call the neighborhood medium area, someone who, say, had these lots together would be allowed to expand, add, but do it in a way that is in concert with what's already existing in the area. We looked at some very historic neighborhoods in places like Riverside, where this has been done very, very successfully, and we think that this is a perfect type of opportunity for this area south of downtown. Same thing in a slightly lower-density area, you can see the kind of effect that we think can be done very well there, providing additional housing, providing additional revenue to the city and the taxing agencies, and allowing our downtown to continue to thrive simply from an increase in population in the area. Once again, if you were to take this location with two houses, there'd be a way for that to very effectively be done, and still meet the character of what's down there. If you go down those streets, and I'm sure you're all familiar with them, the mix of housing sizes, housing types, and so forth, is actually what contributes to the character of that very traditional neighborhood. We also took a lot of time to talk to people about how they felt the frontage of those properties ought to be treated. And that, the code actually contains examples of how that relationship should occur between building and street and sidewalk. We want to make sure that this is an area that is bikeable, walkable, and comfortable for people to be in over the long term. As we've seen in many, many areas, these are the types of neighborhoods that are beginning to attract investment, even much more so than subdivisions that are located quite some distance out of town. So with all of that, we are recommending to you that you adopt both the general plan amendment and introduce the ordinance that would allow this to occur. As I said, I think this is an important step forward. It's the next step forward in the downtown area. It's to really look to the neighborhoods that are around it, and provide that opportunity for continued growth, continued investment, and bringing life back to some areas that we have some willing property owners, they're just waiting for the signal from, from the city that we, in fact, support this approach. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? You're off the hook?
Well, not really.
Mr. Reeves?
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I, this area, it's 186 acres, that's a lot of land. It covers a lot of residential area. I think the reason that we've expanded it so, so broadly is that we would qualify probably for a lot of grants and so forth. I want to keep the residential part of the city down here. I saw that his illustrations of the medium neighborhood and the low neighborhood, some of the neighborhoods over there are, are not bad, some of them need to be improved, but they're residential areas. They add to the charm of the city. If we get involved in mixed-use and industrial, et cetera, it's going to destroy the character of the neighborhoods. I have a different concept of the city. I think that the emphasis right now should be Sierra Highway and Avenue J, and leave these residential areas alone for a while. You know, I envision us going out from Lancaster Boulevard, and you see the mountains. I envision beautiful homes all the way out west on Lancaster Boulevard. I envision making a left turn on 20th Street West, and you have a beautiful street all the way to Avenue K that rivals anything, that we can compete with the mall, and we'll have beautiful department stores. That's my concept. I envision Avenue J at 10th Street West, a beautiful courthouse, a center of law and justice for the city. I can understand why you want to do this, we restrict it on the land, but let's don't lose the vision of the city, and don't, let's don't lose the charm of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes. Can we hear from Mr. Vos first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't think we were going to let you off, did you?
Jim, don't, don't break our toys, okay?
First of all, I'm not used to sitting this far to the...
To the right?
No, this is to the left of the, of the public. I'm normally a little further right.
You seem to be maturing.
At any rate, as Mr. Ludke pointed out, this has been an effort of both the Architectural and Design Commission and the Planning Commission for the last three years. Between the staff activity, which has been exemplary, and the commission's involvement with the community outreach, it's never been done in this community before at that level. At our planning commission, we held, I believe, five public hearings on the matter. We gathered a tremendous amount of input, and the recommendation is coming to you folks in a, as a unanimous recommendation. Thank you for the opportunity of commenting on it. I just want to, again, commend the staff of our city, particularly Mr. Ludke and, and his folks. You know, he laughingly says he's not off the hook. He's never off the hook. But he's, he's a great guy, and does a tremendous job for us in this community.
I'd like to thank both the commissions for what they've done. I know that it's been a long effort. I watch them on TV, I watch them, I review what you've done, and it's a, it's a tremendous amount of work. And we have had a tremendous amount of public input through this. I think the public has bought into it, and it's, it's a compromise between everything that we've done. So with that, I'd like to...
No, 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 no.
You asked for a motion.
I know, but I'm curious as to why you think this is leading to the left.
No, I'm, not, not the council. The place where I'm sitting is to the left of the audience.
It was really the physicality of it. Okay, okay. I misunderstood.
Normally, Mr. Mayor, I sit in, in your seat.
I'm very familiar with where you sit.
And I would point out, it's, you know, it's a fairly comfortable seat.
Until it's not.
It rarely happens at the planning commission.
Thank you. Mr. Griss?
You ready now?
I'm ready now.
Actually, I'm not. Can we close the public hearing first, please?
Oh, public hearing's closed.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 15-04. And the introduction of the ordinance? I don't think we can do that at the same...
We can do it the same.
You can do it in the same motion.
Okay, and introduce the ordinance number 1003. Second.
It's unanimous with two members recused.
Andrew was winning.
Okay. New business item one. Any communications?
No communications.
Thank you. Mr. Derryberry?
There's no comments? I was, I was, I was hopeful. Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council staff, you know, I've had the pleasure and opportunity to present to, to the council many times about what we're doing with the Neighborhood Vitalization Commission over the last many years. I think the mayor appointed myself, maybe five years ago, to, to chair this commission. I've had amazing ideas, so I thought, but then I was told that Mr. Vos's commission was the one that was to fulfill some of those. And then I had other great ideas, and Dr. Viera's was to fulfill those. And then I had other great ideas, and then the Architectural Design Commission was to fulfill those. So I found myself sitting in, in your seat, Mayor, thinking, what can I do to better the...
You guys cannot have this seat! But go on.
So, so I sat, I sat in, up there, thinking, what can I do to better the neighborhoods? If, if all of my ideas are taken by the other commissions, what can I do? So actually, your mayor brought Asmopolis idea to us. You'll remember Asmopolis was a little gizmo or gadget that was to be used by asthmatic children and adults to, to foresee when, when an asthma attack would happen. So how would that help us? So what we did is that caused the commission to form this, this health subcommittee. And so we actually took our meetings away from, from the council chambers. So Vice Mayor Chris was disappointed he couldn't see us on TV any longer, and we moved him over to the MOA. And instead of keeping such a formal process here, we, we went over there and we invited Alamo Valley Hospital, Kaiser, High Desert Medical Group, the community-based organizations, the Children's Bureau, the school districts. We've invited as many people that were willing to come to hear about our ideas about the, really, the health and wellness. You know, we, I'm fortunate to have other commission members, Michelle Kiefer, David Misher, Lisa Moulton, and myself, to work together on these ideas. And so we spent the last about two years thinking of ways to improve the health and wellness of the neighborhoods, because I've kind of come to the realization that that's how I'm going to impact the neighborhoods with this commission, is through the health and wellness. So how can we do that? We can utilize the programs already available, the, the wellness homes in the, in our many neighborhoods in Lancaster. And then implementation, how do we implement it? We're fortunate enough to, through, through your support, we're able to bring AmeriCorps Vistas back to our city. And we've added from two, we've now expanded to five, and we have three dedicated to our program. So, so they're here today, and they're going to actually present, really, in some respects, their idea that, that we've all vetted and worked on and thought about, and spent a lot of time on the last six months. I mean, push, push come to shove, it wasn't just, it wasn't just the four of us on this commission. I mean, we're talking, we've had an incredible amount of community support. All of the key players in the medical community are here to support these ideas. We've even had AV Hospital tell me they're going to put up some money to support what we're going to do here, and you're going to hear about tonight. And we think from, through, through their bullying, we can get Kaiser, and maybe some of the other groups to do it as well. We've got some really good ideas, and, and I think, you know, what the vistas are here to present to you, I think you'll buy into. So, you know, they have our support, our commission, our subcommittee that we formed this wellness, health and wellness subcommittee. So let's hear what they have to say. So I'll welcome the vistas up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the city council for helping us here today to present about our new and exciting program. My name is Kaylin Kim, and I'm here with two...
Move the mic closer to her, will you?
Sorry.
Okay, good. Thank you.
My name is Kaylin Kim, and, and I'm here with two of our team members, Johansson Gatewood and Rodolfo Rodriguez, who's going to start the presentation.
Hello, my name's Rodolfo Rodriguez, but you can call me Rudy if you'd like. So the beginning stages of this health and wellness initiative started with a focus on research. The vistas got together with the Health and Wellness Committee, and we were able to look at a lot of available data. And what you're looking at right now is actually a condensed, a condensed form of data published by the Alley County Department of Public Health. And this report basically states data from 2013 that compares the Antelope Valley's health profile versus the other service planning areas in the county. We weren't able to put every single category up here, but this infographic basically highlights where we, the most urgent healthcare issues currently faced in the Antelope Valley. We have, the Antelope Valley ranks highest in obesity, highest in diabetes, among many And with a lot of these health issues on the table, we decided to look at each one of them on an individual basis. And what we noticed when we were having these conversations was a lot of the root causes kind of overlap. And the root causes for a lot of these disparities, as you can see, is physical activity and proper nutrition. With these two, you can have either a healthy or unhealthy lifestyle. And when we looked at the data of that same report, you see that seven out of 10 children in the AV do not obtain recommended levels of exercise, seven out of 10 children in the AV do not eat breakfast daily, nine out of 10 adults in the AV do not consume the recommended levels of fruits and vegetables on a daily basis. So when you see that data, and you combine physical activity and nutrition, you get depression, you get hypertension, obesity, stroke, breast and colon cancers, diabetes, and another handful of health, health issues. With that said, we thought it was most appropriate and most impactful to focus on obesity, not obesity, sorry, not just obesity, to focus on nutrition and physical activity. And with that in mind, our team did a cross-analysis of hundreds of case studies across the world, really, that focused on nutrition, on physical activity, or a combination of both. And we were lucky to come across this study, prepared by Johns Hopkins University, released in 2013. And this study basically analyzed hundreds of programs across the world that focus on obesity prevention, but what's unique about it is that it measures the long-term effectiveness, so what works. They looked at multiple setting interventions, such as schools, homes, childcare centers, primary care centers, and community-based or nonprofit centers. And it, this study consisted of over 160,000 child participants. And what this study found were that these two models were the most successful. It had the highest strength of evidence for effectiveness in long-term. So what that means is, these children actually came out healthier than the, the way they started. And the two most successful models are school-based interventions with a home component that focus on nutrition and physical activity, and your second one is a school-based with a home and community component that focuses on physical activity. With that said, I'd like to introduce my colleague Johansson, and she's going to go over the two programs that we would like to implement in the AV.
Hi, my name is Johansson. And so the commission, over the past couple of months, has been giving us directions in terms of programs and initiatives they wanted to see implemented. So what we were tasked to do was to find different community health programs across the country, and find those that not only were research-based, but could easily be implemented here. We were able to find two, both involving the schools during and after hours, and today we're presenting to you a new program that is an adaptation of... we're presenting to you a new program that is an adaptation of both. But before I go into the specifics of our new program, I'm going to talk about the background of each program we found. So ABC Fitness is an in-school physical activity-based program for elementary students. This program won't take any time away from the currently existing curriculum, and it's designed, and it's designed on channeling that extra energy that children have during the day and then turning it into productive bursts of energy. This is a low-cost program that was research-based and developed at Yale University by Dr. David Katz, who's one of the leading specialists in preventative medicine. So how it works is that teachers will be given minimum training and a manual that's free and available to them online. And in this manual, we'll have different bursts of activity for their students to do. And each activity burst has three components to it. So there's a warm-up, which typically consists of stretching, and then a core activity, which is the physical activity component, and then a cool-down, which is usually more stretching. But the idea is that students should accrue up to at least 30 minutes of physical activity from these activity bursts per day. Food and Fun is an after-school nutrition and physical activity-based curriculum, and currently, this is actually being used in YMCA's throughout the country. And it's also a low-cost program that was developed at Harvard and what we hope can bring children and their families into the wellness homes where we plan to implement this curriculum. So how it works is that there are 11 different teaching units, and these units go by the month. So each month will cover a specific health behavior, and then it'll be reinforced through physical activity, nutrition programs, and parental materials. So we plan to consolidate these programs into one and then pilot it as the Mayor's Health Academy. And the cohort, oh, sorry. And the mission behind the Mayor's Health Academy is for our program participants to receive access to healthcare and healthier behaviors that will lead them to healthier lifestyles and then essentially transform Lancaster into the healthiest community one generation at a time. And so after collaborating with the school district, we've decided to work with the upcoming 2015-2016 kindergarteners. And one of the main reasons why we've selected them is that because we want to start instilling healthy habits in them at a young age. And we know that our kindergartners are in school from 8:20 a.m. to 2:40 p.m., so we know this would help teachers in finding curriculum throughout the day. And studies also show that students with healthier habits improve in academic achievement. And we've been told from the school district that our kindergartners have the worst attendance rates. So this is actually something that we would want to look at and measure. And now I'm going to have Rudy talk about the schools.
So after we had a discussion with the Health and Wellness Committee, and we engaged with the districts, and we were able to identify where they thought these programs would best be fitted, so we can pilot them. And what we were able to identify were actually a lot of schools, but these three schools had a very strong need, and I'll show you some data that supports that. First, these three schools aren't part of the Heel Zone Initiative, so we wanted to also complement those efforts and see what, also invest resources into other schools that haven't been really tapped into. Next is, as Johansson mentioned, there's an after-school component. Although the in-school programs focus on the kindergartners, the after-school programs are opportunities for us to do some outreach to other ages, but also, more importantly, engage parents that are kind of, parents of the kindergartners as well. So the reason why I say that is because these three elementary schools have a wellness home placed within walking proximity. As you can see here, the State Department, sorry, California Department of Education requires all public schools to have their students, their fifth, seventh, and ninth graders, take a physical fitness test. So basically, this is, this year's, last year's fifth graders, right here. This is the state standard. Those are the scores of each fitness category. And this is Joshua Elementary School, Sunnydale Elementary School, and Sierra. The red notes that they are far below the state standard, and the green, very few exceptions with Sunnydale, actually overexceeded. So there's a really strong need. With that said, the Mayor's Health Academy has, and in coalition with the Health and Wellness Committee, we've come up with goals. And part of these goals include, and this is just of our program participants, to monitor obesity levels. We've talked about that we're going to be working with schools, and some of our key partners actually want to adopt the schools. And part of the adoption isn't only providing financial support for incentives, but also to provide in-kind services such as medical, basically have medical professionals perform the BMIs so that we're keeping record and monitoring the health impact from start to finish. The next thing we're going to look at is nutrition consumption, making sure that our program participants are not only learning what to eat, but they're actually practicing it when they leave their homes, and we're going to be monitoring that as well. As Johansson mentioned, healthier habits can lead to improved academic achievement. Something we're committed to is also making sure that all of our program participants, our kindergartners, go on to their first grade. And a very important piece of, I guess, one of the most important goals for us is making sure that our program participants, whenever they reach fifth grade, that 100% of them meet the healthy fitness zone. And what's, basically, because we're starting with kindergartners, we'll be able to pre-test them before and train them until they get to their fifth grade. And what's unique about this opportunity is we'll be able to extract the data at the state level and compare our own cohort. And the idea is that our own cohort would be among the healthiest students in California, and we'd be able to apply this model and expand it across other schools in Lancaster, the AV, and maybe even beyond. And last but not least, the district has expressed concern that the kindergartners have the worst attendance rate in the district. So we are also going to be looking at attendance and work with parents to see how we can reach to 100. Now, when you look at these numbers, they're really ambitious goals, but if we're trying to create the healthiest community in Lancaster one generation at a time, we need to have these numbers in mind at all times. So we've broken this curriculum down, this program, into different graduation stages. Available material through Harvard and Yale allow us to, they basically give us seven years' worth of design programs. And with that in mind, we just thought it was a natural fit to have graduation stages at the fifth-grade level, seventh-grade level, and ninth-grade level, because the state has a physical fitness test. And what's really unique about this program is it's the only one in the area where we're actually monitoring kind of conditions at first, and we're actually following through till the end to also monitor the long-term impact. So when you look at this program and you look at the very first slide that had kind of where we rank as AV in some of the worst health conditions, this generation could potentially bring that number down significantly. With that said, the Vista Group, along with the Health and Wellness Committee, are making a recommendation to form the Mayor's Health and Wellness Council. The Mayor's Health and Wellness Council, their values would be community health, leadership, impact, unity, innovation, and diligence. The mission would be to eliminate all health disparities in Lancaster one initiative at a time, the Mayor's Health Academy being one of the very first. What's unique about this council is we'll provide recommendations based off of research of best-practice models to place productive and experts with unique expertise on child behavior and practice as well for nutrition and physical activity to help, kind of, help the, keep the diligence in the program. With that in mind, I'd like to introduce Kalen to talk about the website.
Now that we're possibly having a rebranded committee and launching our new program, we want to showcase our website that can enhance our community and also the program. For past year, Neighborhood Vitalization Commission has been discussing about having a website that can work as a community resource guide where people can go online and look for health-related resources. Also, they recommended us to have a city, have a community calendar where people can go online and look for their programs that is related to health and all the events that's going on in the community. After talking to numerous different website developers, we have come up with a concept of our website. These are some of the features that we want to have on our website. We want to have some of the basic features such as a homepage and about us. Under about us, we want to recognize our product sponsor, and some of them are present here today to support us. We will want to have a separate tab just for the Mayor's Health Academy, which Johansson and Rudy already mentioned about. Under Resources page, people can look for their resources regarding to the health. Last but not least, under the Community Calendar, people can look for the programs and activities that's happening in Lancaster. And people can submit their programs and activities through our website, and we can go over them and put them on the calendar. We want this to be our new health hub of the Lancaster. Now I want to talk about our next steps. We want to have an event called Toast of the Town. We want this event to be our signature annual event for the Mayor's Health and Wellness Council. For this initial year, we want Toast of the Town to be our website lunch party, where we walk everyone through our website and show them how to use our website. Also, we'll announce Mayor's Health and Wellness Council, and also we'll announce Mayor's Health Academy. After the initial year, we want Toast of the Town to be an event where we go back to the community about our progress that we made throughout the year. This concludes our presentation. But before I open up the floor for questions, I want to thank the mayor and the members of the city council for having us here today. And in the future, you'll hear more about the One Link Program, which these other two vistas are working on. Also, I want to thank Kelvin Tantango for being of great support for us and our program. With that said, I want to open up the floor for questions for us and Chairman Derryberry.
Any questions?
I don't think I have any questions. Thank you, Mayor, for asking. But just to the three individuals, Kalen, Rodolfo, and Joey, if I have that correctly. Thank you. Absolutely amazing, the research that the three of you have done with your leadership, Steve, is just absolutely amazing. And also, your presentation in general is very informative. And this is definitely what our mayor and the city represents as good health. And we're looking forward to our new generation. You're absolutely right, for the kindergarten children to be the new generation to change that. But we're very proud of this presentation, and your work is very well appreciated. Thank you.
If I could summarize just two important things that you probably weren't able to recognize from the presentation. These vistas have worked with us for six months and have been able to compile all of our years' worth of work into these, really, these two programs, the Mayor's Health Academy, which I'm sure, Mayor, you like the brand. And then we can also, this idea of launching this website that the community-based organizations are so eager for. You know, we've heard, before we were able to bring the vistas in, you know, I came and presented this idea that we need to launch some website to be able to tie everyone together because the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing in this community, because everything is pretty archaic. There's red book, the red book of phone numbers and calendar ideas. So we can tie that together on this website, and then we can pull together this health initiative in our schools. We've had an immense amount of cooperation from the medical community, and our last meeting was focused just on them, and they've all bought into this. So I'm not coming here today as a chairperson asking for money, because really, quite frankly, I think we can do all this with community support and sponsorship. We just want your support from a staff level to ensure that we can implement this program and brand it under the city of Lancaster. And with that, I think that, you know, that Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission, maybe we rebrand the name of our commission to the Health and Wellness Council, or Mayor's Health and Wellness Council, because again, I've had a very difficult time these last many years doing something that's not done by my colleagues, a few of which are already up here tonight. So anyways, that was my last few comments, and, you know, we'll open up for more questions.
Dr. Vieira, is this a game changer?
Well, I think it's a great idea. You did your research, absolutely. I find it interesting that the highest or the lowest rate of attendances at kindergartens, I think that speaks to the fact of your professional development, where you may look at is bringing those parents in, I think is going to be key at that point as they go throughout. I'd love to see, as you establish that baseline, the growth that goes from year to year, I notice it looks like it stops about ninth grade, so, you know, if we see some success there, I think that's something we can look beyond K9.
Thank you.
I don't think we've given any credit to the Lancaster School District, who has really opened their doors to us, and we have representatives from the district here tonight. You know, Dr. Bowers in the Lancaster School District has really, really just been arms wide open to these programs and these ideas. And that's really where it starts, is those three schools. And once the program works, it's our ideas to expand it to others as well, so.
Anyone else? As flattered as I am of the branding, and I, I'm so happy about this. I've been wanting something like this since I got elected. I think that it's a start of something that's going to be magnificent. I think we should brand it so that it doesn't bring any resistance to it, you know? Not everybody loves their mayor.
We could name it the Vice Mayor's Health.
I knew that. I knew that was coming.
I think the concept is too important to politicize it in any way. I mean, what you're doing here is really a game changer in many, many, many ways. I'm hereby appointing Stephen Derryberry, the czar of new ideas, and so he doesn't have to go through any commissions. And for you three, oh, you will have a place in my heart forever. And if there's something wonderful we can do for you, tell us what it is and we'll do it, because you certainly deserve it. This is, this is great work. I mean, really, really great work. So I look forward to the party. I'll probably even help with that. Great. Thank you so much.
Do we need a motion to receive and file?
No action necessary on this. You may move to receive and file if you would like, but it's not necessary.
Move to receive and file.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you again. NB2? Yeah, this is, this is a meeting of great things. Wow. I mean, I don't, I don't think everybody recognizes just how much work went into the different things that are being proposed today. It's gargantuan efforts.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor. Commissioner Vos and Commissioner Vieira. It's my pleasure to bring to you the next step in the implementation of our Community Choice Aggregation Program, Lancaster Choice Energy. This step is an administrative step. It is approval of our binding notice of intent, which formally notifies the California Energy Commission, the California Public Utilities Commission, and Southern California Edison of our intent to provide electricity to the customers within geographic city limits of the city of Lancaster, beginning in May 2015 with municipal accounts, and October of 2015 for the remainder of the energy users. I do want to recognize Southern California Edison, who has been a terrific partner to work through this process. You wouldn't think that they would be, because we will be a competitor with them, but they truly have been a good partner to work with. It's been a pleasure to work with them through this process. We're both learning through this. We are the first CCA in their territory in all of Southern California. They, the group we're working with, has been excited at the prospect of implementing Community Choice Aggregation, and we're truly pleased with the work that we're doing together. I'm happy to answer any questions, but our recommendation is that you approve our binding notice of intent.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the...
No, 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 no. I said questions. You know, what this means is we're actually going to lower the cost of power to the citizens... You know, what this means is we're actually going to lower the cost of power to the citizens of Lancaster. That is so phenomenally huge. And it, you know, it strikes me as odd, you know, we have the press here covering whether or not we give somebody a $500 fine for committing a misdemeanor, and they totally miss this story. I mean, this is revolutionary, in that we've actually taken back the ability to power this community. Actually, not take it back, we just took it, and will now be able to provide electricity in a more fair way, I think. It's not tied to what everybody in the state's doing, but tied to what we're doing. And the work that went into this will never be known by the people who didn't do the work, because it was, they had to reinvent it, or they had to invent it every step of the way. Nobody had done it before. This staff of this city is just unbelievably great, and nobody knows it. I wish there was a way that everybody could know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a motion? No, is there a motion? No pouting, no pouting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the binding intent.
I'll second that.
And it's unanimous.
And Barbara, I'm loving the new hairdo.
Okay, NB3, Thunder on the Lot. City Clerk, any communications?
No communications.
Wow, Ron, you must be doing something right. Nobody's complaining.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. For your consideration tonight is the appropriation of a $45,000 budget for the city's contribution in support of this year's Thunder on the Lot that will be held the last full weekend in June of 2015 at Lancaster City Park, that's the important part. We're really excited this year to partner with Thunder on the Lot, spearheaded by Ron and Yvette Imar to move the event to Lancaster City Park. It's in its 21st year. They're very excited to join with us to do this and sort of inspire some new life into the event. And for 20 years now, they have partnered with kids, or actually, they have supported kids charities with all the proceeds from this event each year, and we're hoping to add to that bottom line this year. And I should mention that all of our budget shall go to staffing, and that is fully reimbursable with event proceeds. Should any additional expenses come up that we have not anticipated thus far, those will be mutually agreed upon prior to any actual expense being incurred. So Ron and Yvette are here tonight. I'd like to invite them down to speak a little bit more about the past, present, and future
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor, City Council, staff. Wow, 20 years. As we said before, about eight months ago, we had decided 20 years was enough, and we, my wife met with the charities, and out of it came a five more year commitment. Because once we met with the charities, we realized we started Thunder to bring awareness to childbirth in the Antelope Valley, and it grew from there. We seen the need for our children. So once we got started and then we realized it was working, we zipped past 10 years. Now we passed 20 years. We've donated well over $4 million, but what we've really done is exposed a lot of charities to a lot of people in the Antelope Valley, and have really seen the true heart of our valley, Lancaster, come forward and help these kids. So instead of saying goodbye to it, we talked with a number of people and decided that it needed a facelift. One of our main problems was it was too hot where it was at, there was no shade, and we always laughed about that. But we realized that we needed to go back to our roots, where we had the best, and that was at the parks. So Lancaster City Park was a perfect place, and Lancaster City couldn't be a better partner for us to continue it. Now realizing in five years, I'll be pushing 77 years old, so I will probably have to let the reins go to my wife, to my wife. But we're so happy for you to consider this and to be a partner with you, and continue to help our kids in the Antelope Valley in many, many ways.
All right. Good evening. So the Kids Charities was founded in year 2000, however, Thunder on the Lot started in 1995, so that's how we've accumulated 20 years of growth and also contribution back to our community. The Kids Charities proudly supports 34 children's charities right now in the Antelope Valley, and all of them collectively put all of their resources and all their funds into aiding some of the most disadvantaged children in our community. And so we're very proud that, you know, our grassroots event that has involved not only many local businesses, local residents, and charity organizations, numerous entities, service organizations have all come together, everybody's worked together to make this happen. We're very proud of that. Kids Charities has, like I said, been in existence since year 2000, however, it wasn't until April of 2013 that we actually opened up an office. And now we're at a point where we're producing five events each year, all in support of local charities. And the nonprofit organization itself has five primary functions. First is our fundraising, to raise money and in-kind donations efficiently. Secondly, community service, to promote and coordinate volunteer supportive service providers. Fund distribution, to distribute charitable funds to the most effective service providers in our community. Fourth, community building, to build alliances among charities, businesses, and other entities to support the community. And publicity, to execute support through events, promotions, and awareness campaigns. So it's a new era for kids charities, as we regrouped and reorganized in 2013, strengthened our board, did some wonderful things to take kids charities to the next level, and empower events like Thunder on the Lot, Grace Fest, and others that we do. It's also a new era for Thunder on the Lot, and we're really looking forward to our new partnership with the City of Lancaster. It's all really perfect. Thank you so much. And I'd like to, if I may, please bring up Danny Bazell, our treasurer, from our board to make a few comments, and then we'll have one quick charity representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council staff. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just here on behalf of the Board of Directors of Kids Charities, just to say that we are very excited to partner with the City of Lancaster in bringing the event to the city park. The grass, the shade, it says family all over at the park atmosphere, the expertise that Rhonda and her crew bring to the event planning for an event the size of Thunder on the Lot, which has grown from a small car lot event with a few hundred people to, you know, 18 to 20,000 people at the fairgrounds. It is a huge opportunity to reach more people in the community that can actually walk to the event if they wish. The visibility from the freeway is outstanding. People are going to drive by and say, what's going on in June at the city park this big? It's not the Poppy Festival, so what is it? And that's going to spark interest, and I think it can only increase the visibility of the event and increase the impact that we have on those most deserving in our community, the children that are disadvantaged and underprivileged amongst us. And the $4 million that we've raised through the last 20 years, I think that's only going to see future benefit to more generations out there. And I just, I'm excited, on behalf of the board, I just want to say, it's going to be great, and I'm looking forward to it.
Good evening. My name's Rick Chisholm, and Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I represent the 34 recipient charities of Thunder on the Lot. As a director of one of those charities, I, like my counterparts, take honor, have an honor of being part of the event. Thunder on the Lot has a legacy of helping children in the Antelope Valley, and we are proud to be part of that legacy. What Thunder on the Lot does is it connects the thousands of people that come to the event with the charities themselves. It gets our name out into the community. That is publicity that I cannot afford, but I have people come up to me a lot of times that say, oh, I've seen you guys at Thunder, and it gets our face out there and gets us known. The charity that my wife and I direct, Royal Family Kids, is a camp, club, and mentoring program for abused and neglected children that are in foster care. Last year, we took 79 kids to camp, and we have 18 of those kids in our club and mentoring program, which goes throughout the school year. And without the support of Thunder on the Lot and kids charities, we could not be able to do that to the extent that we do now. Each of the charities provides volunteers for the event, from selling food to working in the raffle booth, selling sodas. And what that does is it forms a partnership with the charity and with kids charities and the event. And we've been part of Royal Family, or Royal Family's been part of the event for 16, 17 years now, and it is not only a partnership, but it's also become a friendship with the with kids charities, so thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, it is our recommendation that you approve the appropriation of $45,000 to be reimbursed by event proceeds for this year's 2015 Thunder on the Lot.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I need to make sure that I don't have to recuse myself, in case I do sit on the Board of Directors.
You sit on the Board of Directors of Kids Charities, which is a nonprofit entity. A seat on the Board of Directors of a nonprofit entity does not constitute a financial interest, and therefore you do not have a conflict.
Or, if I may also, Mr. Chisholm, who is part of an amazing organization, he's also our employee at University of Antelope Valley, is that a conflict?
Unless he provides you income, no.
Do you?
I've never given you a dime.
I'd like to also point out, it's not just for disadvantaged kids, but they do give it to sheriff explorers, they do give it to other kids that are boys and girl scouts, so it's a 50/50 thing between all the kids. It's a kids charities, it's not just for disadvantaged kids. With that, I'd like to move NB3.
Second.
Thank you.
And I'm designating June 27th, the week of June 27th, the Ron and Yvette Imar Week, and we will figure out a way to do something appropriate in that week, because what you two have done for this community is truly remarkable. And I had no idea you were that old.
Thank you. I don't diet, but on the 26th, you know, you're going to have to bring out one of your cars and go on our cruise, which was very popular last year. Thank you very much, and I'd like to compliment staff again, they've just been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if the council has to vote on that, we can do it next week, but you all know how I am.
No, explain it.
CA1, I'm taking it off the agenda. The mic's off. Your mic's off, sir.
Oh, CA1, I'm taking it off the agenda. I don't have the votes anyway. What? I can count.
It's an estimate on your part. Nothing new with AVTA. We are looking for an executive director with the AVTA. We are looking for new legal representation for AVTA, for the AVA QMD. I don't think there's anything new, Ken.
Nope, we're all good. Okay. On the AVTA, are we looking at local council?
Yes, that's going to be our preference, that we're going to ask that they have a response time to us, a 30-minute response time.
Oh, good move. Does anybody tell Derryberry?
No, but he talks well, he talks with his hands.
Yeah, yeah.
I saw you guys, you two.
It's a secret code, you have no idea what we're saying to each other.
Yeah, it's like karate.
It's like baseball.
Okay, great. No action on the power authority, no action on the... Oh, do we have any announcements?
City manager announcement?
Yeah.
Just one, if you allow me, I'm going to change what I was going to say, it's more of an observation based on the mayor's comment, and I hope it comes out right, because I'm probably channeling David Paul here, so the, it's been my pleasure to be the city manager since 2007 here, and I've worked with the mayor every one of those days, and I know what's in the mayor's heart, and it struck me what you said about this meeting and the things that we're doing, and a lot of the things we wanted to see, and this council and a staff that worries more about do than who, meaning do it, don't care who gets the credit, like Kelvin, who had a lot to do with what you saw with the Health Academy. But you don't always see improvement every day when you're doing it every day, and just the observation of looking at a planning commission that's up there that's done a remarkable job, just the thing today is changing for downtown, as you said, and the Criminal Justice Commission's brought the community in, but the one that struck me was Stephen's Commission, where that commission started from, and where it is now, and what they're doing. So I think it's a good time to reflect a little bit on sometimes looking back at how we're continuously improving. And just an observation, but that's what struck me about today.
You know, when the press was interviewing me out there over that ordinance, he asked me, he said, well, why shouldn't you wait for the state to do this, you know, shouldn't the state handle this? And I think that is truly the difference between this city and the rest of the cities in the state, is that we really do chart our own course, we really don't care what the state does, you know, we move forward, and every day it's about moving the ball forward. And I'm just, I just love being mayor of this city, because the people in it are just so incredible. And the council's not bad either. Thank you.
Marvin, I think that was a compliment to you.
Was it? I understand that we're changing it to the Vice Mayor Health and Wellness Council. Is that true?
You probably have the votes now. All right. City Clerk.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-adjourned matters. Please complete a speaker card, which can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matters will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar DeLeon will be speaking on behalf of the group.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmen and Women.
Thank you.
My name's Omar DeLeon. I'm a resident outreach coordinator for a nonprofit agency called South Bay Center for Community Development, and also a student at UAV. I'm here on behalf of the residents from Desert Paradise, who have, I've, in the past six months, have been working with them to coordinate them and to help them out on some of the issues that they have at the Mobile Home Park. Also, I've been coordinating with Desert Palms. We've come here a couple of times last year about their issues with water also. So... So I'm representing them today and speaking on their behalf. I have a letter here from one of the residents that I'd like to read out to you guys, to Mr. Omar DeLeon and the mayor, from Rita Lopez. "I have been a tenant of Desert Paradise Mobile Home Park since the year 2000. When the park was, was being sold by Estelle Leach on her husband's behalf, James Leach, who had passed away. I purchased my mobile home park through a private purchase and set payments directly from Mr. Leach, and continued to, to rent the space my mobile home was established on. When I moved to the park, it was very quiet, very maintained, mainly adults, and a peaceful, pleasant environment. In the 15 years I have been at this location, I have watched the park deteriorate to the conditions it is in now. It is my recollection, recollection that the park was purchased by Mr. Edgar Reynosa in approximately the year 2000, who is related to the current owner, Martha Setruggesi, under the company name of Proud American Investments Company. Since that change in ownership, there have been many different park managers, continued failed efforts at park maintenance, lack of, and complete loss of communication with management, and very dangerous conditions, i.e. the sewage. I am not quite sure of the date when Mr. Reynosa vanished from being the responsible party owner of approximately, but it was in approximately the year 2006. Due to the unhealthy living conditions regarding raw sewage overflowing from septic tanks, the park lost its business license. Violations were, were corrected, and the corporation was listed as another name called D-A-M-plus-M Investors LLC, AKA Martha Setruggesi and her brother Amador Horicio Martinez. The new owners and managers did not bring any positive change to the property. Martha couldn't get along with many, Martha couldn't get along with managers, so there was constant changes. Our laundry facilities were permanently shut down, and machines were removed. The swimming pool was filled in and turned into additional spaces for mobile homes, and the septic sewage tank systems had continued, has continued to be a never-ending problem. The tanks are not emptied on a regular basis and overflow into driveways, yards, and homes, neighboring homes, creating the ground and, contaminating the ground and creating serious health issues. One child has recently come into contact with sewage and developed blisters and sores on his feet and body. In the past, managers, management would put septic tank treatment packs into the tanks to break down the solid waste, but that isn't done anymore. Now Blanca instructs the park managers to pour bleach on the, on the overflow, which is in itself is dangerous and causes toxic fumes and could create a deadly gas that could lead to health, health problems if inhaled regularly, and also cause an explosion. There's also the issue of how the tenants are treated. Blanca talks to the tenants in a very disrespectful manner. I personally had had to take Blanca to court to get the title to my mobile home park, my mobile home returned to me, as, as they claimed it was on one of the trailers included in the purchase of the park, and they transferred ownership to their name, D-A-M-plus-M. Judgment was granted in her favor. Blanca and, on the tenants' favor. Blanca harasses tenants for rent money, has told tenants if they don't have the cash, she expects, she can, she accepts gold or vehicles in, in lieu of paying the rent. I have heard previous tenants state that they are moving out because Blanca threatened to call INS on them and have them deported. Blanca and the corporation are very aware of what is required to relocate a mobile home, permits, costs, moving companies, and et cetera. It is all very expensive and not readily feasible for a family on, on a tight income. Trailers are sold to families who spend every dollar they, they save to buy a home, then may fall behind a little, and the late fees are attached until they are buried in debt to the park and bullied by Blanca for the many, for the money they owe. The tenants would rather sell their trailer park, trade, sell their trailers back to the park for very little money, considering the money owed to the park is deducted from the sale rather than, rather than be continually harassed or bullied. Also, I would like to add on, add in regards to the gas and electric bills. We do not know where, who is responsible for reading in the meters, but the tenants feel it is being done incorrectly. Due to incredibly high utility bills, such as residents that have brought, like Felicia Sosa, who lives in space 21, her electricity bill is $479 this month. And Jacqueline Ariano, who's right here also, who lives in space 41, her electricity bill this month was $409. So they don't know who reads these meters or how they're being charged by any of these utility bills. I have gas bills that I have here also that are up in the $100 also. So they, what they want is a solution from these problems. Currently, we have Mr. Torres, who's a city, works for a city that's out there, that has been out there in the past couple of days, to try to fix some of the issues of the septic tank overflowing. Currently, the managers have, have put gravel over it, but it's not compacted yet, and there's a lot of, when cars pass through it, just a lot of slippage, and, and it's very dangerous for them. At the moment, that's basically what she has done to try to fix the issues, is just, basically just pour gravel over it. So the residents would like a little bit more solutions and something that's concrete, basically. There's a lot of, also, there's a lot of safety issues, inadequate lighting, pavements, there's no speed bumps on any of the roads there, the pavement itself are cracked, a lot of potholes, so there's a lot of issues there also, with safety issues also. I have currently brought a couple of poster boards that took pictures of, if I may show you guys. So this is the septic tank overflowing here, and these are homes surrounding them. There's one home, there's actually four homes, one here, one back there, one there, and then one in front there. This is in the middle of the yard.
How long did that condition exist?
It's been going on for years. It's been going on for years. I've been there for six months and I've been in there.
Meaning, it's looked like that for six months?
Well, this, this is for the past two weeks now.
For two weeks, it's looked like that?
Until, when Mr. Torres just recently went there to tell them to put gravel over them. So the past two weeks, this is how it's been. Also, this is the back, this currently, that I counted, witnessed myself, because I go around looking at them and try to, you know, capture evidence.
Do you live there?
I personally don't live there myself.
What's your involvement?
This is Desert Paradise.
Yeah, but what's your involvement?
I'm a community organizer. I'm a community organizer for a nonprofit agency.
For who?
At South Bay Center for Community Development and First Five L.A.
Do we know who they are? I know who First Five is. Are they good guys or bad guys?
First Five is a reputable organization.
Okay.
Comes from First Five California.
I don't know the other one. They may be two. Okay. Just need to know if it's a white hat or a lockout, you know?
And this is the, the back septic tank. This is one of the ones in the middle of the homes, and then this is the one that's in the back. As you can see, it overflows all the way to...
Bring those up, bring those up here.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Securities might shoot you, but that's okay. So how long has this been going on?
Past two weeks. The past two weeks it's been like that.
And it's sewage?
That's, that's the one that's actually covered by gravel.
And it's raw sewage?
Raw sewage, yeah.
Covered by gravel, I mean, it's still there, they just covered it.
They just, they just covered it up.
You gotta step back, I'm sorry. So, so is a law firm involved yet?
No, sir.
Why isn't public counsel involved?
I became aware of this today. I do not know why public counsel isn't involved, but I am familiar with several representatives of public interest firms that might be interested, so I will be...
Suggest to them they actually have a real case now.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Most definitely.
All right, what else?
Also, other, another safety matter is the electricity. This is, this is from the outlook box. This caught on fire, I believe yesterday, day before, and one of the tenants that's sitting back there at her home, and the owner, the manager herself didn't want to fix it and told her to fix it herself, so she had to hire outside electrician to come and repair it after it burnt down. So this is one of many issues that are happening there.
Does the landlord provide the electricity?
Based on the statement, I'm assuming the tenants pay for their own utilities, correct?
They pay, they pay the owner. The owner has a sub-company that reads the meters himself, and from there charges each individual tenant that lives there.
No, no.
This is it right here.
The owner's, oh, wait.
They don't have an Edison bill, they don't have a gas company bill.
Do you have...
They, they pay the owner itself and, and...
Through a private company?
The readings from, I'm sorry?
Through a private company?
Through a private company.
And that's an example of a bill, or?
Yes, ma'am. I have many, many of them here, month after month after month.
I don't know. Can, can we have those documents or those?
Can.
Okay. If I may, sir, I think the suggestion or direction to the city attorney to put them in touch with legal counsel...
I want an ordinance, if it's, if we have the power to do it, put it into that.
Submetering inside of mobile home parks?
Anywhere. You know, you know they're jacking up the rate?
Yes, they are. $400, $470,000 for electricity bill for one month. I, I, I know math...
Marvin doesn't use that much electricity.
I think that's a lot to be charged.
Don't go there, Marvin.
I live in a home, and my electricity bill comes to 100, if that.
Right.
So imagine a small mobile home.
Is that yours? Wow.
Don't we have something in the sheriff's department to look at this? I mean, this sounds like, this, this looks like major fraud going on.
That's exactly what it is.
Could you, could you have somebody look at it? Especially if they're submetering and then they're taking their homes, this, this, this is something out of the 20s, and it sure as hell shouldn't be happening in Lancaster. Allison, you wanted to say something about, I'm gonna turn it over to Allison now, okay? Is that good?
Sure. Thank you so much for hearing us out.
Yeah, in addition to referring the folks at Desert Paradise to public counsel, we had some success, and we're continuing to move forward with Desert Palms using the mediation program through the Tapestry Commission, and obviously mediation is inappropriate for dealing with sewage issues. That needs to be handled on a much more expedited basis. But when we're talking about the concerns about the pool and some of the laundry and some of the other things that are not life safety threats, I think it may be appropriate to utilize that program again and see if we can get the tenants talking with the owners to get, to try and get them moving towards a solution, as we were able to do with Desert Palms. And they're still on the path, they haven't gotten all the way there at Desert Palms, but bringing the people together to work with one another was productive in that instance. Obviously, working together on sewage is not, first, we need to address the life safety issues, and then we can address the other issues that they've raised.
I'm biting my tongue.
Try not to bleed.
Try not to what?
Bleed.
I, I don't understand how this, we know this is a problem, right? I don't know how we can have sewage ponding like that when we know there's a problem.
I, I found about, out about this problem today, so yes, this is a problem, and this is a problem that will be addressed immediately.
Our guy's been out there, we will report it if we haven't already to the Health Department so they can do that, get them legal counsel, and as we're aware of it, the sheriff's department, I'm assuming, has not been aware of it up till this point, will go and investigate it.
Somebody needs to go to jail. I mean, if half of what he says is true, somebody needs to go to jail.
If I may also, I think the other important part is not to say it's life-threatening, but it is to those that have to count every dollar to feed their children, which is that bill. That's another one, I think, and I think we all agree that that's one that needs to be addressed right away. Very good.
Yeah, we don't have, you know, Mark, this is what really befuddles me, coming from the restaurant industry. It's inconceivably impossible that the health, I can't figure out what the Health Department is doing, because if it was a restaurant, it's, it's closed and fined immediately. Now, obviously, you wouldn't want to close the, the park, but you'd think that there's got to be some kind of mechanism within L.A. County to, to deal with, with a mobile home park. They gotta have some kind of ordinance, gotta have some kind of mechanism.
It's, it's through the state. The state is the enforcement agency.
It's, should be abundantly clear what the council wants.
It is crystal clear what the council wants.
The, I'm especially concerned about the, the, I mean, they got, they got circuit breakers blowing up and nobody's replacing them, and I mean, hey, what are you guys doing? Yeah, the fire department. This is a formal complaint that we would like the fire department to go through that trailer park, all right? I mean, it, it's a disaster waiting to happen. Okay.
Good job, Omar, thank you.
We'll see, we'll see where we are in a couple of weeks, okay?
Omar, could you have the people that are represented just stand up? We thank them, they've been here for two and a half hours.
This is just a fraction of the residents and outreach that live there, a fraction of the group that I formed over there, and I commend and I thank you so much for having the guts to come out here and be here.
It's not risk-free. I mean, they are taking, they are taking risks.
It is, you understand why.
Yeah.
So it took a lot to bring them over here, and thank you for that, over here, and thank you guys for, for letting these people...
And I'm, you know, I'm really, I'm sorry this is happening in our city.
I think you're a hard worker.
Yeah, really is.
I formed the group at Desert Palms also, so when they, when you guys were speaking about mediation, we'll get on that a little bit. Mediation is over between us and them, because they didn't want to go on mediation. So they ended it last, two weeks, on the 22nd.
Wow.
So they didn't want to keep mediating with our side, which I have a couple of representatives from there also, Alvia and Ramona, of their tenants from Desert Palms, and there were their investigations, and they were replaced, they didn't want to continue with it, so I think could keep going on with that also.
Reach out to the supervisor's office, see if we can get the Health Department out there in a, in a very proactive way with Spanish-speaking investigators.
We will do that tomorrow morning.
I don't want that to be an obstacle to discovering just the depth of this. Okay?
We'll do that tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Thank you, bye-bye.
Que Dios la bendiga, gracias.
Quit showing off. Okay, back to the speaker cards. Michelle Egbert, not here. Michael Reeves, you're, you're going to talk about me now?
You're not against the sewer, are you?
Talking on senior citizens, so I'm assuming it's...
I'm Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. A few weeks ago, the L.A. County Office of Aging came over and gave a report at the senior center, and I was there and listened to the report. The city had a representative there too, and they discussed the nutritional program at the center, and I was always under the impression that the meals that they presented for lunch met the daily requirements of, for the seniors. And looking at the handout that they gave, I discovered that the, the lunch program only provides one-third of the nutritional value for the seniors every day. That makes sense, people are supposed to eat three meals a day. Many of the seniors over there, that's their only meal, and if they don't get that meal, that's too bad. Now, I, I pointed out to the staff over there that sometimes on the weekend, like, they have Saturday and Sunday, and then if it's a Monday holiday, like we have coming up, then these people have to scrounge around for food, and they're making a, looking into providing them food for the weekend to hold them over. In addition, the county's looking for a new site to build a new center, and I asked them, "Why can't you build it on the site of the old center?" And they said, "Well, it's not large enough." So they suggested one site... So they suggested one site, a division in Avenue M, which is ridiculous. No one could get over there. I've recommended and I've also communicated my feelings to the hospital board, AV Hospital Board, that the senior center be built on the grounds of AV Hospital. They have eighty-five acres of land. They're going to create a medical center over there eventually. And they're also interested in the seniors of the community. It fits right in. So that's being worked on right now. And I hope that the senior center, if it can be, it has to be in central Lancaster for they can get to the center. I hope that the city will support me in encouraging the county to consider the site at AV Hospital.
Michael, you've come up with a really good idea.
Thank you.
I mean, that really is, that makes sense, doesn't it? There's a symmetry to it.
Right. I did, and also, you know, one of the problems right now is that the facility down the street, the kitchen went out of order. And they're having to bus in to bring up the food every day from down below because they don't prepare the food there anymore. So there's nothing can be done about that. They said they're going to fix the kitchen, but.
That really is a problem with the supervisor's office. You need to call Norm.
Fine. Well, I've communicated it, but.
I like your idea of getting behind the.
I can't stress that. I hope that you support me on, and have it at center over there.
I like that. I will. I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good idea. Jason Zink.
Well, I'm glad the city of Lancaster went in with vendor on the lot. My sister teaches special needs kids and her son is a special needs. He's a soccer coach for special needs and they receive funds from kids charities. Also, I came here today to talk about the signs all over Lancaster and Palmdale, all these lease, commercial lease signs in front of these shopping centers. It's an eyesore. Makes us look ghetto, especially for investors that come up here and look at this. I don't think, I think it's probably against city ordinance. And if it isn't, there needs to be an ordinance where these signs go on the building or in the windows. Why would we want to build these shopping centers and put, you know, a wooden sign up there? And some of these wooden signs have been up there since 2007. So I want you guys to really aggressively look at this. I mean, think about somebody coming up from LA and, you know, I put the thing in the paper. It's terrible. It's an eyesore. Why do we want to live like this? The other thing is felony education. I'm glad you're here, Mr. Mayor. I think you need to do that in high school. These kids need to understand the consequences of their actions. They don't know. They have no idea what a felony is. They accept it, they turn around and say, what was that? You know, in the courthouse. What we're doing to this courthouse over here to these young people is wrong and it needs to be investigated. And also, they should know that they're accepting $6,000 a payment to the probation department. I think that's probably the biggest civil lawsuit, I mean, I don't know what you call it. Civil lawsuit? Where you have to repay all these people that were misinformed about how they were taken. Also, you know, the DMV, I don't understand why we didn't think about having all these people that are taking their driving test and have them over at the Palmdale Culture Center or somewhere else at, you know, at the college or something.
We are not taking the rap for Palmdale.
But, you know, it's just terrible. In 2015, I think this is going to be a good year. You always say, Mayor, I wish I knew something in order to fix all the problems and, you know, to create jobs here. There is. It's very simple. We become our own county. We stop being second-class citizens. We stop being treated like this. We could create 10,000 jobs overnight. Why are we paying people in Whittier to take care of our sewers? Why? Wouldn't the police get all the stuff, the auctions?
You can't become your own county unless the rest of the county agrees. And there's no way the rest of the county is going to agree to us stop giving them our money.
Well, it just takes legislation change, right?
What?
It takes legislation change, right?
I'm just telling you, it's been tried for forty years now.
No, it hasn't. Well, I'm thinking about running against chair and runner on that one issue. And.
And now the clock ran out.
So we'll find out if I'm a writing candidate.
Kurt Boyer.
Oh, it never amazes me anymore that I come to the best meetings. Real quick issue here, the senior center, can you move it? Everybody lives in the Arbor Court, they live in all the surrounding apartments. To get over to the area by the hospital would be next impossible. They.
Marvin pointed out to me that's a terrible idea because we need it close to the fire department for rescue services. And there is no fire department over by the hospital.
All right. I had initially come here to talk about ideas about energy conservation. I briefly touched on them recently last time I was here. I'd love to be able to talk to somebody involved with the city. I literally can cut your electric bill in all your industrial areas in half with what I've known and what I've been doing over the years. I don't know who to speak to. It would be, it would be who, myself and the city, if I at least could throw these ideas out at somebody and see if they're feasible. You yourself now also mentioned that you are willing to accept, I don't know about, I won't say help, but contributions from people to deal with this issue with the fines and the homeless. I don't want to beat a dead horse.
Kurt, why do you put the two together?
I'm not. I'm just squeezing it into three minutes. I can do both.
You ass.
I'm just trying to get it all done in three minutes, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
I know how this stuff works. Pretty soon, there's a headline that I'm fining people for being homeless. I mean, we've been there, haven't we?
Oh, no, 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 sir. No, sir. Not at all. Not at all. But I do deal, I know at least two to three hundred homeless people. I deal with them directly. So I'm just simply saying I would make myself available, since you said you would be interested in possibly getting people from outside to get involved in that issue. So I'm making myself available. I already put my foot in my mouth, so thank you very much. It's been a long meeting.
Thank you. You know, Jason brought up a, remember, Mark, we talked years ago how Palm Springs was taking their retail properties that were for lease and putting artwork in the windows to do away with that abandoned look?
Yeah, we saw that.
We talked about that. We perhaps should revisit that.
Okay. Yeah, we saw that somewhere. I forget what it was.
Yeah, it was Palm Springs that did it. We should revisit that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fran Sarasiris. Did I say it right? I didn't say it backwards, did I, Fran?
Well, basically, what I was going to talk about, I'm just going to have to change it for another day because what Mike said, I have already, I spoke to you already on December the 2nd about the senior center. And I've already spoken with Antonovich's office. And I already have Norman working on it. And I'm working with him. And we are going to do something, and we are doing something about it. I just, we haven't got everything finalized. But I was thinking also, his idea is a good idea, but it is a little far. But can you hear me?
I'm deaf.
Can you hear me now?
It's not you, it's me. I'm deaf.
Okay. Because my voice is very low too. But also, right now, what came to mind, this new project that Brian brought up this evening, why can't you section off a portion there for this, for a nice, big, beautiful senior center? And then that building that you already have, existing building, keep that, of course, fix it a little, you know, make it nice so that you can keep the public programs that you have going there. Because that's what's conflicting, the seniors and the public that are going for their services. And that old building is, like I said before, is bursting at the seams. Now, see, I got all my notes. So that was, this is my December 2nd notes.
Are we working with the supervisor's office on this?
The new senior center?
Yes.
We've been in conversations with them. I don't get the sense they've invited us in on the decision-making process.
But I've been, I've been speaking with them. Okay. Oh, Mr. Councilmember, Mr. Mann? I wanted, last time I spoke, and you mentioned about the 250 bond money, I think it was around 250, 250,000 or millions or trillions or whatever it was. Anyway, the money that you're going to hopefully get back and give to the community, I wanted to thank you and thank you, members, for, again, thinking of us. And I don't think, a lot of people don't say thank you enough to you. I had a, oh shoot. I want to save this for next time because this is a nice, valuable piece of material that is about Lancaster Honda, what they did for me.
Did for you, right?
Did for me. What did I say?
I thought you said did to me.
Oh, no. Did for me. Well, not even for me, for this chair. Well, I'll just, give me two seconds. No.
Yeah, kill the light.
Okay. On December the 14th, there was a winter ball party, Christmas party at the senior center, and I went and I danced to this chair, okay?
I bet you do.
And we were having fun and everything. And anyway, this chair, as I was on the dance floor with my friends, you know, my chair broke, the wheels broke. So instantly, because Honda, Lancaster Honda put the program together for us. They paid for everything. They waited on us. And almost just like that, his name is Conrad, came over to me. He says, we'll take care of it for you. We'll fix it. I looked at him, I says, and I was kind of shocked, but he did. He went over to Mr. Cutler, because they were, he was there and all his whole family. And sure enough, they took my chair that same afternoon. I motioned to Mr. Cutler to come over to me because I couldn't walk to him. And I hugged him and I thanked him and I told him, the commercial that Honda puts on is true. And I couldn't believe it and I, I was.
I love that. That is awesome.
I told him, I'm a hugger. And I gave him a big hug and I thanked him so much. And then on top of that, when, this is Friday.
Send this tape to Ricky.
Friday, this is Friday, okay? I called my girlfriend because I didn't have a, because I need this for regular stuff. I got a power chair, but anyway. So she brought me hers. And then she brought that on Monday. Real quick, anyway, Monday came around and Conrad from Lancaster Honda, he's a manager or something down there, he came with my chair fixed. They put new wheels. These are it. And then he comes with another wheelchair because one of the guys that works there, Joe, he had a wheelchair, so he brought that along too. Because this one's kind of falling apart. And, but, you know, that is such a wonderful, wonderful feeling to somebody can just, you know, get you, pick you up and.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me share this with you.
Okay. Wally Melendez. Is Wally still here? There you are. Good evening, Wally.
City Council, Mayor, Staff. Mayor, why did you take out CA-1 and is that legal?
I don't know. I never pay too much attention to that. Allison said it was legal.
But I have several items here, Mayor Perez. How was your vacation?
Sleepy.
You know, I eat over there and, you know, speaking up to that lady there, I eat over there once in a while. Social Security, you know, it's very little, as you know, and some people don't hate welfare. They won't take welfare, like myself. So I just, I make do with Social Security and if I can find free food, I'll eat it. And they have good food over there. They have good meals. But over there, if I may make a suggestion, over there, they have ambulatory people and they have decrepit people. And they bunch them all together. Why not have two lines? The ambulatory people can go through the line and get their food and eat it and get out. And the ones that are decrepit can sit at the tables and let themselves be served. And that would, and that would economize the situation over there somewhat. Well, since you took out that item on the agenda, I guess I can address it in this section here.
Two or three minutes.
Well, you were on vacation for a long time.
I wasn't on vacation.
So, so.
Did you guys say that I, did you guys tell him I was on vacation?
Overtime.
And, and, you laughed and I lost my train of thought.
Wally, what do you, you think I was on vacation?
Well, okay, can I ask you for three more minutes?
Two.
Thank you.
Because you said decrepit. You only got two.
I looked it up in the dictionary that.
Did you hear him say that? He said it, didn't he?
I looked it up in the dictionary and it's a respectful word. It's not a insulting word.
Wait till you're in the wheelchair and see if you think it's insulting or not.
Well, I apologize, but I thought, but I looked it up in the dictionary before I found it up. So anyway, Mayor, it's actually confusing to have the city council elections in April instead of the normal time in November. And a lot of people don't realize when the elections are for November, for the city council. And I'm bringing this up because the other day I saw a sign that said, no dynasties. And when you confuse people about elections, that's what you get. You get dynasties. That's another.
Wally, they weren't talking about me.
Insulting. Anyway.
It's the other dynasty they're talking about.
So anyway, so, and the, and the, and our meeting should be on the first and third Tuesday of the month so that people that want to go on vacation, like your honor, can go at the end of the month instead of taking the whole month and then the other month. Lord your respect, Lord your respect there, Mr. Lawyer.
Wally, I didn't even have time to get a haircut. I was working so hard this last month. I mean, look at this mess. I mean.
Anyway, Mayor Perez, I do think you're a good mayor. Anyway, Mayor Perez, tomorrow is the 11th of February. I'm going to be 70 years old. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
You deserve a vacation after that, sir.
And Fran, he's sorry. Okay. Shannon McDonald. Shannon left. And last but not least, David Paul.
David, please refrain from saying anything about him being on vacation.
I was going to say he's on his way to working up to the title of your lordship.
I'm not biting. Keep going.
Mayor Vice Mayor Counsel, good evening again. It's a privilege to be here. I love to come and add tonight to the things I love about the city, what you did for the people in that trailer park. When we become aware of problems, we deal with them. And that was, that was, I could hear them cheering in the hall on the way out. The people went away satisfied with their government's action. That's incredible. You know, I, you're right as well, Mayor, about the many things that are magnificent here tonight that are going on in our city. The wellness program, I was thinking about, I've done two courses lately on Coursera. One was called Learning How to Learn.
Wasn't that a great course?
It's a great course. And basically, I want to introduce the word chunking because that's the way that your brain builds synapses to the information. that's the way that your brain builds synapses to the information that you have just learned. You have to get sleep proper nutrition, but the best thing is the, the recreation, the recess, I mean, that's what really helps children get out, it fights obesity, run around in between the classes, that, that was an excellent class. And then, I'm also working in the middle of one about gamification, and I saw, it's adding game elements to businesses, or whatever you're trying to do, and I noticed up on the presentation, they had the bronze flag, the silver flag, the gold flag. These are elements of gamification that can be put into the website to just make it more fun, so, and as you know, that's how you learn, to make it fun, so. Now, the, the choice piece of information I want to share, I went to Palmdale last Wednesday, and I went there basically for the TCal meeting to talk about how we end violence in our community, and it happened to be the same night as the city council, so I thought I could go over there and give my three minutes about this power plant, because now, all of a sudden, they're going to sell this thing to somebody else who's going to put a gas turbine in there, and they couldn't find a gas turbine. I just wanted to know, are the owners that are buying it going to be able to find a gas turbine, or couldn't Palmdale just do it? It's very confusing, but they didn't even put it on the agenda, they, they didn't even put the consume calendar listed, I mean, it was just lost in the shuffle. I went in there and I looked, and I knew they weren't going to give it any serious discussion, so I went back to the meeting, and there were some very good things come out of there, and just, you know, I'm always inspired by how this community comes together to work its problems out, and I'm just proud to be a citizen of the city, and thank you for everything you guys do, it's amazing.
Thank you, David. Okay, that's it on the speaker cards, right? The city council will now move to closed session to discuss closed session items one through nine.
We do not need closed session tonight.
What, nobody's suing us? That's not possible.
We have no updates.
Okay, well, that's great.
We're now reconvened the meeting.
We are now reconvened.
The city council will adjourn in memory of Fitz Fulton. Mr. Fulton's aviation career spanned 45 years, during which he logged more than 16,000 flying hours in more than 240 types of aircraft. Fitz was an Air Force test pilot for 14 years and continued as a test pilot with NASA for another 20 years. After retiring from NASA in 1986, he joined Scaled Composites, where he developed test flights for the Triumph Business Jet, and retired again in 1989. Mr. Fulton was known for his quiet, steady demeanor, and was known as a real southern gentleman. He was inducted into the National Aviation Hall of Fame, received four Air Force Distinguished Flying Crosses, five Air Medals, the Society of Experimental Test Pilots, Kinchloe Award Trophy, and two NASA Distinguished Service Medals. Additionally, Mr. Fulton was recognized on Lancaster's Aerospace Walk of Honor. Fitz Fulton will truly be missed, not only by the local community, but by the aviation community as well. The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, February 27, 2015, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home.